Mayor Proton, present. Young. Councilmember, Colonel, present.
All right. Thank you. If you could all join me and stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. Thank you. Councilmember Contreras, could you read this in effect?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The first item is public comments. I do believe that every person that has signed up to comment wants to comment during the public hearing on item number two. Is there anyone that wanted to speak on something other than item number two? And we got that. So, okay, great.
Do you need to do the minutes?
Yes, I was doing. First item we have is the consent agenda. Council minutes from January 9th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from January 9th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. All right. The first item is a public hearing to consider a request for change in rezoning from Class II Residential R1 Single Family District to Class III Business O Office District for 721 Ranch House Road, Lot 1, Block 1, in the Willow Park Church of Christ Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas.
Madam Mayor Proton, before we allow comment, I have a comment.
Certainly. Would you like to address?
So I know there's quite a few of you here, and this is the agenda item while you're here. Four o'clock today, we received a petition from a number of residents, I believe maybe six, which is the qualified number that was required. There are a number of requests to be put on this zoning. Staff hasn't had a chance to fully review all of them, but what I have looked at, it does have merit. And so some of the things that are on this agenda or on this request, we're going to visit with later. However, we cannot take action on any of these things tonight because of the way the agenda item was posted. And so everyone's going to have an opportunity to speak, but staff recommendation for the next agenda item, which would be for the action item for council, staff recommendation is going to be that we table this and postpone it to a later meeting so that we may have an opportunity to visit with not only the people that came with the zoning petition, but also with you guys and try to find an equitable solution for everyone. And so again, everybody's more than welcome to come and speak. You're more than welcome to say what you need to say, but staff recommendation to council will be to table this for a future date.
All right. I will open the public hearing at 6:03. I'd like, before any speakers come up, you have a three-minute window to present your comments. I will have Crystal doing the timing just in case, and so she will be the one that will signal around 15 seconds left if you happen to go to your full three minutes, just to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. So our first speaker is Mr. David Lorenzo. You could come up, state your name and address.
My name is Dave Lorenzo. I live at 133 San Bass Road, and I would like to read into the record the petition referenced earlier. The undersigned respectfully assert that the request for to rezone the Church of Christ property at the located at 721 Ranch House Road to Class III O office space be denied. The current ordinances in loose enforcement of current ordinances will permit the developers of this property to support businesses that would dramatically detract from the local neighborhood and will have a significant and detrimental impact to the property values in the area. Specifically, the citizens demand that either the city ordinances be changed to include these requirements or specific provisions are added to the rezoning approval that ensures the cities will enjoy the current quiet, peaceful, and uncluttered views from their homes. These requirements must apply to current and any subsequent owners of the property and include, one, specific prohibition of the property to be used as a wedding or party venue, prohibition of lighting that shines outward toward parking lots. All lighting must shine toward the structure and be warm, a warm light, 2,700 to 3,000 degrees Kelvin, no bright lights that illuminate the neighborhood. Specifically, this means that no light from any lens can be seen from neighboring properties. A prohibition of overnight parking on the property. We do not want vehicles, especially service trucks, on the property at night and weekends. A prohibition of large industrial vehicles or trailers parked on the property at any time. A prohibition of dumpsters, outbuildings or supplies on the north or west side of the building. All outside structures, supplies, equipment, or dumpsters must be concealed by privacy fencing. A prohibition of outside functions on the property. Seven, a prohibition of the use of loudspeakers on the property. Eight, only simple vacancy signs are permitted. No waving flag runners or blow-up characters or attention-getting devices. Nine, a prohibition of any electronic signage either on the building or on the monument sign. Finally, the developer must provide a comprehensive plan of the renovation, number of offices, expected number of employees, anticipated traffic, volume from the businesses, and a complete lighting plan before any rezoning consideration can be made by the citizens and city council. The design must fit seamlessly into the neighborhood environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Stacy Lynch. Is Stacy...is not here. All right. Next speaker, Mr. Voorhees, Clifford Voorhees.
Hello. I'm Clifford Voorhees. This is my wife Cindy. We live at 116 San Bass Road here in Willow Park, and I'm here for support 100% of what is going to be stayed here tonight. My part is a little different. I am one of the few that got a certified letter that this meeting was going to happen, to my reelection, to my reelection, excuse me, that I did not know that there was a 200-foot area of the said property. So that was all news to me. So then I looked a little bit farther of other requirements of how many days in the newspaper. I just want to let you know, I looked in the two newspapers, searched their archives, and I did not see where it was posted. I'm not saying it wasn't posted, but I could not find it. So anyway, I'm just going to go on. I don't agree with the 200-foot restriction. It does not represent all the people that are affected by this proposal that are beyond the 200 feet. It will affect everyone that lives near the said property on Ranch House or San Bass Road. It may not be equal, but it will have an effect of some kind, whether it's traffic, property value, or maybe an eyesore. I was in Tennessee when this meeting to, was held on January 16th, but my wife was here attending. The voices concerned over the property becoming commercial 3O. Because the questions asked were not answered, I strongly urge you to vote no to the rezoning as it states now. As you can see, just down the street, what can happen with a business that is once, that was once a residential area, is now business, and the trucks and the employee vehicles clutter the small area and the business trucks park their view of Ranch House Road. Also, we certainly do not want to see the lighting like we currently have at the Shell Station on the corner of Ranch House and I-20 Frontage Road that shines in your eyes and you can't see at night. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teri Holcomb.
Hi. My name's Teri Holcomb. I live at 108 San Bass Road. I'm right across the street from the church. I wanted to bring up that I have a 10-year-old son that likes to play basketball in the driveway. While I'm deeply concerned with all the negative ramifications that will come along with rezoning the church building to commercial, my biggest concern is the safety of our children in the neighborhood. I often see children riding bikes and scooters and walking past the church to go to the park or just playing outside in the area. I also know middle schoolers wait for the bus on the corner of Ranch House and San Bass Road and are dropped off there. And then there's the preschool at Cross Timbers Baptist Church. Having multiple offices and several strangers working in the building, possibly coming and going all day long poses a threat for children and our neighborhood. Can anyone ensure that people renting these spaces in the building are not going to have nefarious reasons being there? When my husband and I bought the house about four years ago, we loved that there were two charming traditional churches across the street. We never expected there to be an office building in our front yard. This lovely neighborhood with wonderful neighbors, we all work hard and we take pride in our community and in our homes. I just, that's one of my biggest concerns. I'll go through a couple of other concerns. Selling the building in the future, we don't know what's going to happen and if somebody else buys it, and who knows what they're going to use it for. The influx of strangers across the street from my house, the decrease in the home and neighborhood appeal, increased traffic diminishing the neighborhood feel. I worry about the signage that's going to go up, lighting, as everyone's mentioned. Are there going to be cameras pointed towards my house violating my family's privacy? What changes are going to be done to the outside of the building and just overall construction that's going to take place? That's all I have. So thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Mr. Walt Allen.
Hello. My name is Walt Allen. I live at 132 San Bass Road. And the questions I have, of course, they've already covered a lot of them, but it, and I'm not, don't know what Zone 1, 3, or 5 is, so. But other than sending three letters out around the neighbors that you're going to rezone, it wouldn't be, is there not enormous to put a sign out there in front of the church and say, we're going to rezone it? I mean, nobody knows it but four people that you sent the letters to. So how does that involve the community? I mean, there's got to be where people can drive by the road. It may have been posted. I never saw it. I didn't see it in the web or y'all's.
I won't take up your time to answer your question.
No, no, that's fine.
We will later.
Okay, that's fine. But I was also concerned about the property value because we don't know what they're going to do to it. If they're going to put a fence around it. So our concern is more, of course, on the value and the safety and the lights, what all they're going to do to it. And I don't know if it's been addressed. Obviously, it has not been addressed much because he's going to bring it up in another meeting or session, whatever. But that was our concern about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Prill.
Hi. I'm Jenna Prill, and I live at 100 San Bass. When I go out my front door, the church is right there. And we've been there for 27 years. And like everybody's already mentioned, I have all those concerns. But if, I guess I'm just pleading to each one of you is to put yourselves in our position. If you lived at my house and had been for 27 years, would you want that church to become a commercial property? That's the bottom line. And all of us are just asking y'all to think long and hard of what it's going to do to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Diedrich.
Good evening. So most of the questions have already been presented to y'all. I just want to kind of speak of my experience since moving to Willow Park. I moved to Willow Park because it was a great community and still is, and thank you for some of the things that y'all have done in the community, like bringing in different kind of restaurants and so on. But the four years that I have lived at the corner of Ranch House Road, and this is concerning to me because something that was a church is about to turn commercial, okay? Our four years, we've seen an increase of traffic flow on Ranch House Road. And just last year alone, there's been one wreck outside my home. The tree stopped the vehicle from going through my fence. There was another wreck outside my home in the middle of the night, and I'm always afraid that I'm going to find someone who's been ejected through the windshield in my front yard. Down Ranch House Road, a contractor was working. His tire flew off the trailer and went into our backyard with the bolts and everything. The rim's still attached. We sent an email out to the city concerning it as well. No one ever got back with us about it. So it's just little things that, as a resident, is very overwhelming and aggravating because, I mean, we elected people here in this facility trusting that y'all will do what's in the best interest of the residents. And so, no, I don't agree with anything going commercial next to our home. Okay. Thank you. And my husband will be back for speaking whenever this is pushed back to a later date.
Can I get your address?
Yes. It's 1101 Stagecoach East Trell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Robert Heil.
Good evening. I'm Robert Heil. I live at 117 San Bass, which is adjoining this property. And I just wanted to say, and I sort of act as a neighbor and join them in these concerns, but I'm also representing the seller, the Church of Christ. We wouldn't have made this move had I not had confidence in these people that are buying this property and what they're going to do with it. I think one of the things we need to clarify, well, there's a couple of things, but one of the things that needs to be clarified, we've used the word "commercial" kind of loosely, and the "commercial," as I understand it, that's being proposed, is pretty restrictive. And so I think we need to clarify things like that. But though I have signed this petition with them, I, as a neighbor, I'm not opposed to what's been proposed for the use of the building, but I am highly concerned about the ordinances. My Baptist brethren, emphasize brethren, please, have put up lights, and they are in my backyard. And so I am really concerned about the ordinances and writing those down, where it doesn't affect them, but should they ever sell it in the future, it protects us as a neighborhood. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I think that was our last speaker with the public hearing. I will close the public hearing.
Can I clarify a few things for you?
Yes. I will close the public hearing at 6:18.
Do you want me to clarify a few things?
Yes. And now, do you need Tony, or is it just you?
I'll just, I'll do it real quick. So a couple of things on the two. One, did we only send out six notices or whatever? It was 200 feet. That's state statute. So anything beyond that is not a requirement, and so 200 feet is what we have, is what we adhere to. We did run an ad in the newspaper. We're trying to track out what day that actually ran, but we got confirmation, 5th, November 5th, December 5th?
10 minutes.
Okay.
It wasn't in the last two, it was the one.
For P and Z. So the way this works is that when we have a zoning request, it comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is appointed by this council. We try to keep council out of the P and Z activities. We want them to be an independent body and an independent board. We want them to make independent decisions free of any sort of, and I hate to say this word, political pressure from the council. And so the recommendation from P and Z was to grant this zoning request with a condition for the lighting. Once it passes P and Z, it comes to this body for consideration. So there was never, I've read somewhere that this was a done deal, or this is already happening. This is the, this is the process that we go through. This is democracy in action, if you will. They're doing that right now in New Hampshire in a different way. And so you're going through your process. Some of the concerns on here, I'd say probably nine of the 10, are very valid concerns, but we cannot address those tonight because of the agenda item. Furthermore, I don't want to put those kind of restraints without consulting Mr. Stockton and Ms. Lynch and try to do something that's equitable for everyone involved. But this body up here will make a decision here on the next action item. Staff is going to recommend that we table this. We're also going to ask to sit down, try to have a meeting with some of the residents and Mr. Stockton and Ms. Lynch, and we will coordinate that here at a certain time. But I just want to be clear on the notifications and things of that nature. We adhere to what the state statute is. And I want to reiterate something. If you see something, if you hear something, if it's on next door, it's probably 50% true and 50% not true. There's another adjective I was going to put in there. You're more than welcome to contact City Hall. We are about as transparent as you're going to get. Rose Hoffman may not have all the answers when you call, but she knows who to get in touch with to get the answers. And, you know, we're an open book up here. So you're more than welcome to call us with your concerns, whether it be on Ranch House or whether it be a zoning request. We're here to help you guys. And so this is, this is how democracy works. This is how we do things in America. And, you know, I guess we can take action and proceed with the meeting.
All right. We've closed the public hearing. I'm going to move on to item number three, which is discussion, action, to adopt an ordinance rezoning from Class II Residential R1 Single Family District to Class III Business O Office District for 721 Ranch House Road, Lot 1, Block 1, in the Willow Park Church of Christ Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. And I believe that we have a recommendation from staff.
To table this for a future date.
Postpone.
I'll make that motion. Do we need specific wording for that?
I postponed the agenda item for a future date for further consideration.
All right.
We have a motion to postpone and a second. All in favor? All right. Thank you. I will just say, thank you all for participating. If you don't know the notice, like the idea is the council agenda goes out by 5:00 PM the Friday night before. Our next council meeting will be February 13th. That doesn't mean, if there's other things that have to go on, that it'll be on that particular one. So just as far as the notifications in the newspaper and such, but it's posted on our website by 5:00 PM the night before either Planning and Zoning or Council. So that's one good way to find out whether it's on the agenda.
Quick question for staff. Does this go back through Planning and Zoning? Is that the step?
Um, I think it would, yeah, it's probably going to go back to P and Z. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth or commit anybody to anything. I can't. I think what's eventually going to happen is that to meet these requirements, which a lot of them have validity to, we're going to either do a plan development or a special use permit to get, to get that done. What that means is we're going to, if it's just a general flat zoning request, we can't put any requirements on it. If we do a plan development or a special use permit, we can put these requirements into the certificate of occupancy for the new building. And so that's just a fancy way of saying, we can do this, but we can't do it just straight zoning.
All right. The next item on the agenda is discussion, action, to authorize the city to extend sewer services to Broadway Boulevard.
Continuing with the theme, there was some issues that came up on this agenda item over the weekend and yesterday, and we have a meeting with the, with the benefactors of this next week, and so I'm going to ask for council to...
No action.
Huh?
No action.
No action. I'm going to ask council to postpone this one as well.
Do we have a motion to postpone?
Make a, go ahead. Make a motion to postpone this till, are we going to set a date or just?
Till the February 13th meeting.
Okay, till the February 13th meeting.
Yep. Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? All right. Thank you. Do you want to do council before?
Sure.
Yes. So we have executive session on our agenda, but prior to that, we'll go ahead and go through mayor and city council comments. Do we have any comments from council?
Yeah, I want to say thank you to Michelle and her team for keeping the water going when we had the hard freeze that we did, and for making sure that the city ran as smooth as it could during that time. So I want to give a big shout out and tell you thank you very much. Appreciate that. And thank you for the staff as well, doing what they can for our city.
I want to thank everybody that showed up tonight to give their opinion. I appreciate that, and we will definitely, or I will definitely take whatever y'all say into consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I'll just go ahead and say, I am your neighbor. I live on San Bass Court. So for those of you that don't know, I drive past that location all the time. I've lived there 30 years. I've lived there 30 years, so I think I'm probably the oldest resident in that area. So, I appreciate it. I think I'd like to say what, you know, Brian, and reiterate, this is what happens. I mean, proposals come through, we want to get feedback. A lot of times, I've sat up here and said, "Gosh, our meetings are so boring. We have nothing. No one... It's... Nothing happens." So, I'm not trying to say that we put things out there to get you riled up or whatever, but sometimes you don't know what people care about until you put something out there to hear what people really want. So, I appreciate all of you taking the time to come out. We did get emails from other citizens, so sometimes you can't make it to the meeting. We do read those emails and see that if you, you know, aren't here. So, just want to say thank you for participating in our government. Thank you. All right, your comments?
Anything from...
I think y'all have said it well. Thank y'all.
Couple of just quick things that no one really cares about. I am going to the SGR Leadership Conference tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, so I'll be out after lunch tomorrow. This is the leadership course that Mayor Moss recommended I go to. Next week, Tony and I, we're going to ICSC in Dallas. We'll be out on Thursday and Friday there. We've got a couple of meetings set up with some restaurants, potentially to relocate them to Willow Park, so we're looking forward to that. Let's see, is there something else? Oh, yeah, Texas Tech's number one in the Big 12. Other than that, that's not comments.
Phil Stager.
We got a boomer. A boomer sooner out there. It's anticipated that all or a portion of the discussion of the foregoing item will be conducted in closed executive session under the authority of Section 551 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. However, no action will be taken on this item until the city council reconvenes in open session. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney in our local agreement between the City of Willow Park and the City of Hudson Oaks for wastewater improvement services, and Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, half and associates litigation. We will convene into executive session at 6:28. All right, we will reconvene into open session at 6:53 PM. I believe we have no action on the agenda items. There are no further comments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn. Second.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned at 6:54.